Okay, the committee of home will come to order this evening. Perhaps we'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is there a here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Discussion's next to you, Tom. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board this evening? If not, you may have three minutes of speaking time. Are there any citizens to be heard?
Mr. President, leave once you're through.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kelly Heberly. I'm the mom of three boys in Erie's Public Schools.
Can you press that red button, Ronnie?
There. I live at 4524 Allegheny Road, and I'm here today to just talk a little bit about the bus issues we've been having. If you could just take one and pass me around. My kids have been riding the EMTA bus to Strong Vincent. We're going on year three now with this route. My son rode it before when it was to Roosevelt. We didn't have any issues. But this year, we've had several times where the bus has passed the kids by. They've not stopped at the stop. It's a hard stop. It's scheduled. It's on their list. They're supposed to be stopping, and I think the drivers are going a little too fast, and they don't know where their stops are. And I know you guys are paying them a lot of money to go here or, you know, to pick them up. And I understand, totally get that it's a privilege. It's not my right. I understand that it's -- I'm very grateful to have the ride. But we live on Grandview, and when the bus passes them by, it stops on the way back and picks them up. So they're having to cross both lanes of West Granby Boulevard, and it's been going on three and a half, you know, two and a half, going on three years now, and the issue isn't getting fixed. Randy's been very helpful, very information, you know, very informative, very patient with us, and, you know, he's given me the supervisor's name at EMTA, and I've called them, but the issue still isn't getting solved. I just printed out some of these pictures so you guys can just actually get a look and if anybody can even take a drive-by. Picture number one is my kid's stop where the sidewalk ends right there. That's where their scheduled stop is on the corner of West Granby and Allegheny. Picture number two is looking east down West Granview. This is the direction the bus is coming. So he's coming from Green Garden. He's going at a good clip, and I think he's just not seeing him or just not knowing where his, knowing where his stop is. Picture number four is looking west on West Granview, and that's where my kids have to walk when he either overshoots the intersection or when he stops a half a block down. There's no sidewalk. There's a big ditch. You can see how close the white line is that the cars are driving where my kids have to walk. Number five is the next bus stop over on Ellsworth, and he passes by there. Just did it last week or the week before. I don't remember which. But you can see where the berm is, where they have to walk. There's no sidewalk, and even when there is, the sidewalks aren't getting shoveled, and the kids are gonna have to walk around into the street anyway. Number six is heading towards Green Garden. Can I have just another minute?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Number six is heading towards Green Garden. You can see how close that car is right to the line. There's no sidewalk there. Number seven shows about the same location, but there's a small sidewalk that runs down that hill into where those apartments are and that parking lot. That's where they'd have to walk or skip burritos if we would, like, go to Green Garden, because I suggested, you know, maybe I can take them to a different stop or whatever the case may be.
Is that seven?
Yeah, that's seven. Oh, sorry, I didn't get you guys seven. There's seven. And number eight is just an overhead view. Our house is the one on the X on the left, so if they were to walk over to Green Garden, I'm certainly not gonna have them walk on West Granby. They'd have to go down to Skyline and around, you know, all those other blocks and over to Green Garden and back up Green Garden. But my issue is just that this has been going on three years now, and Randy's talked to him. I've talked to him. I've emailed. I've documented it, and nothing is changing. So obviously, there's a problem with their training or something. They should know where their stops are, and if they don't, I'd be happy to introduce them to a family out in Wattsburg who had a seven-year-old, early eleven-year-old named Noah who was killed three years ago next week crossing two lanes. And I don't want to see anything like that even happen. But it's not just my family. It's the families over on Ellsworth, and I can't certainly be the only one in the city that this is a problem with. And I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Are your children the only ones that are picked up?
On our stop, yes.
And you have three?
Only two go to Strong Vincent. My oldest graduated from Mary High last year. But the same problem on the block behind us on Ellsworth. And today, as a matter of fact, today, I wish I would've took a picture because there was no yellow flashing lights, no red flashing lights. That happens all the time. You can believe me or you can't, and I know I don't believe everything my kids say, but I've seen this many, many times over two and a half years, and it's a big problem. And I really think that maybe some pressure or something needs to be done. I don't know exactly what it is, but you guys are paying them a lot of money to not have my kids cross into Mill Creek where there's no sidewalks and where there's a ditch and where cars don't stop because they're not expecting an EMTA bus who doesn't have flashing lights to let a little eleven-year-old off. And I don't know what else to do, so I just thought I'd bring it to you.
What time is it?
It's, my kids are out there at 7:20 a.m. The bus is scheduled to be by at 7:25, and he comes anywhere from 7:25 to 7:50.
Unless the administration has a response tonight, can we count on you to get to this and report back to us on what the situation is?
Did you want to share?
Yeah, we've, and we've spoken a couple times now.
He's been great. He's been very great.
EMTA has, and it's one of those locations in the city where honestly, EMTA is having difficulties picking up around that area for some reason. The supervisors, we had the supervisor out driving that route a couple times. They do have it listed on their route card that it is a hard stop, and they're actually supposed to radio in when they stop at that particular stop, which doesn't appear as it's always happening. But I've seen the route card that's placed on the bus, so that is listed for the drivers. So they're trying to gather some information from me. Like was said earlier, that that concern is if we move this stop, then the students have to walk down Grandview to get to Green Garden, which that really doesn't solve much either because there's no sidewalks in that area. So then they're, or they have to walk way down the street, and then they go over Skyline and then back up.
I'll have a problem with that. My kids walk through over Cleveland from there.
So that's kind of the decision we have to make. Is it, does it make more sense to walk to a different stop or, you know, can we somehow fix the issue? But they're still gonna be, regardless, they would still be standing on Grandview where traffic is, where traffic is flying.
The bus used to come up Allegheny. It used to come up Allegheny when it was at Roosevelt. For three years, it came up Allegheny without a problem. And I know you can't tell them, I understand that, you know, they're in EMTA. You can't tell them how to run their routes.
Can you put up a sign of any sort, like a school bus stop sign?
I don't know if the city would do that or not. I could reach out to the traffic engineer.
Mr. President.
Mr. Superintendent.
Since Randy's been working on this and hasn't had any results, I recommend that if you give me an opportunity to meet with the director of the EMTA personally with Randy, and we'll see if we can resolve this issue, and if not, we'll report back.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that wish to address the board this evening? If not, we have the Honorable Judge Stephanie DeMitrivich in our presence tonight, and Mrs. McNair has a presentation to make. Mrs. McNair.
Thank you. I asked Judge Stephanie to come up, so I appreciate this certificate of appreciation. As the rest of the board knows, we have been collecting books, and Judge Stephanie is over the elected women's group.
And so are you.
And she brought books today, and she's gonna donate more books to us via sending them straight to you so that you guys don't have to take it from here to there.
Well, no, we did already.
Oh, you did already.
Ninety-nine books we delivered.
Oh, wow. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you.
So on behalf of myself and the rest of the board and all the students that are going to enjoy the books, we really appreciate this and everything that you guys do, everything that you do personally and the rest of the elected women's do and for these books as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to try that again?
Oh, the picture.
Okay.
You hold that. I'll take the button.
Okay. Thank you.
Three, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
These are?
Yes, so it'll be 102 now. And these are representations of some of the books that we donated. One on Harriet Tubman, Moses; one on a Muslim family coming to America; and one in regard to the United States Supreme Court Justice, Justice Sonia Sotomayor. Sonia Sotomayor, yes, and about her life. And we thought biographies would be good for the students to decide what they want to do someday and learn about people's lives and maybe become the next United States Supreme Court Justice. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
The custodial RFP topic is next on the agenda. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. President. Before I discuss that, I want to just touch a little bit on the governor's budget proposal, which was released yesterday. At your place tonight, I have a summary of two of our most significant state subsidy streams, the basic education and the special education. And what I did here is just compare what's in the governor's budget to what we have projected in the PFM financial projections and also to the actual for 1920. So you can see that based on what the governor has proposed, we are $125,000 over what is currently in the projections. So I know that's, this is not finalized. It has to go through the whole legislative process over the next couple months, but that's a very good starting point for us. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that the governor was proposing charter reform, and he's proposing that the state eliminate the special ed tuition rate for charter schools, which for us is more than double the tuition rate for regular ed students. Right now, we're paying about $9,000 for a regular ed student and $23,000 for a special ed student. And instead of paying that special ed tuition rate, have us pass along a portion of our special ed subsidy, which is driven by a per pupil formula now, to the charter schools. He is also proposing a flat cyber charter rate of $9,500, and their estimates for these changes, the savings for our school district would be about $3.8 million, which again is a very, very positive move, and we're hoping that that stays through the budget process.
Mr. President? I don't know if this would be appropriate time or not, but I had spoken to Mr. Harkins about presenting a resolution to the board calling for charter school reform throughout the state and for us to pass this resolution potentially. I can have Angela send an email version of the resolution to everybody on the board so they could review it and possibly put it under supplemental.
Could you bring this up under the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we talk about it in business?
Sure. Sorry.
That's all right. I admire your eagerness.
Well, I just laughed because he was talking about it.
But just to keep things in, all right. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, the custodial RFP.
Yes, as I reported to you last Friday, after talking with our apparent little bidder ABM on multiple occasions, we've come to the conclusion that we're really going to recommend that the board reject the two bids that were given to us under the current RFP and rebid the whole process. If you recall, we had two bids. METS was, actually cost more than what we are currently paying in-house, so we didn't focus on that through this process, and ABM, which had some significant savings. The problem with METS or ABM's proposal was that they did not break out the savings by bargaining unit for us, which we would need to negotiate with Local 95 and Local 68. We spoke to our solicitor, and he said that if they were able to take the initial proposal and break that out by bargaining unit, it would not be a significant change to their initial proposal and that we could accept that and move on. After several conversations with ABM, it became apparent that they did not clearly understand the, specifically, the role of the firemen and engineers in our buildings and would have provided us a much different proposal if they had known that, and they were unable to provide us that breakout that really tied back to the initial proposal that they gave us. So given that, we are recommending that we reject the bids and rebid. We are already working on revisions to the RFP to ensure that what we need is more clearly identified. The good news is that we started this process very early. We believe we can turn the RFP around very shortly, have the new RFP out by the end of this month, with the intention of bringing it back to you in April so that you can consider it as part of the budget process.
So next week, you'll have a resolution asking hold on to rebid?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments to the board?
Mr. President.
Mr. Nichols.
The proposal that was made, which has been analyzed, would save about $2 million, and that's very significant. That's about 4% of the real estate taxes, and it would be sufficient if it were accurate, and I realize that's still being considered, that we could possibly forego a tax increase this year. We already have a 12.6% city tax increase in the city this year. My concern is that we have ABM, a very qualified bidder, $6 billion in sales, 140,000 employees with a bid on the table with no guarantee that they're gonna bid again, and if they don't bid, we've lost this opportunity for savings. And it sounds like they would like to reopen this in part to increase their bid, which is not illogical for a bidder who finds they were the only bidder that was less than we're currently paying. So it just seems to me we're exposing ourselves to financial risk not accepting this proposal.
Mr. President, I'd just like to clarify and let my, let our solicitor weigh in if I go too far astray, but we cannot accept that bid as submitted to us because it does not break out the savings by bargaining unit. We need the savings for each of the bargaining units because under the school code, we are required by law to negotiate in good faith using that number with both bargaining units. So at this point, we, even if we accepted that bid, we would not be able to negotiate, which would disqualify it immediately.
Thank you.
I've said it better myself.
Anything else on this? Next is the collegiate bid. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I just also want to, I guess, put out there for the board to, as we look to ABM and we are doing our research, and they are a billion-dollar company, and I don't think it would behoove us to understand that they have also been involved in several lawsuits for not following up on their end of the bargain. So even though they may come in with their proposal that wasn't, that didn't even meet our, that didn't meet our needs and that we couldn't accept right now, that we need to look at some of the ways in which they have operated within school districts similar to ours and if those savings were actually realized, because then those schools were then involved in legal litigation. So even though they may put on paper that they would save us a large amount of money, if we are finding that they have developed quite a reputation for not following up on their end of the bargain, I would hate to see the district then involved in a lawsuit to get the contracted services that we're supposed to be getting because of, because of not doing the diligence on just the program and the entity in itself and what they're, we're stating that they can offer. So I just want to put that out there for the board to, as we move forward with this process.
Okay. Collegiate bids. Mr. Rothman.
Yep. So coming around the table is a summary of the bids for collegiate. So just to kind of give you the whole picture, we opened the bids last Wednesday. We had three bids for general contracting. We initially had three bids for HVAC, but one of the contractors withdrew their bid, stating that there was a mathematical clerical error. We had five bids for plumbing, and we had three bids for the electrical. When you take it at first glance, the base bids for all four of the contracts came in under budget. Because we came in so under budget on the security vestibule work, it was time to really start looking at all of the alternative bids that were presented through the bid process. And I tried to summarize them. It's my kind of chicken scratch that's right next to some of those, at least for the Masonry, because those are the ones that are hard to interpret. So it is our recommendation and the architect's recommendation that next Wednesday, we accept the bids that are there, which do include all of the alternates to each of the work. It's good to note that all four of the primes are all locally based, and we have done work with, well, every single one of them over the last, since the facility plan started. We have worked with each one of these contractors. I, I know me personally, I was pleased with the bids. I was pleased with the numbers that we saw. I thought that even with accepting the alternate bids, we are, we are still within budget, exactly within budget for all of the projects that we have done so far, including this. Because there was that savings from the security vestibule, we are still on the original budget that was given to us from HHSDR. Are there any questions about the alternates and something I can clarify a little bit more?
Mr. President. Mr. Nicholas.
Yes, I have a couple questions. We opened up the bidding for this contract. Did you receive any bids from any contractors who have not bid us before?
Yes. The general contracting included one from Hudson Company, because there's two. There's Hudson Company. We received one from them. They have never bid on one of our projects before. At least that's from the general contracting side. We actually had not received any bids from Constantine and Bible. They're a general contractor. We've not received anything from them before. That's the GC side. From the plumbing side, the one that was new to us was Newman Plumbing. They are based out of Zeal in Opel, Pennsylvania, and that was, those are really the only new ones that we haven't seen before.
When are you going to be bidding Erie High School?
So the Erie High School project is most likely going to get pushed back till after July 1st. There is conversation that we're having with PDE and our architects about the possibility of PlanCon reimbursement for that project. So we really have to have a long conversation with PDE about what that's gonna look like and what is the reimbursement gonna be, because the early indications that we received from PDE is that we could get about 65% of that money back. Now, there was no money in the governor's budget, but.
I would clarify that, that there is no extra money in the governor's budget. We, the same line, the same dollar amount is in that line item currently. That line of the budget is paying for debt service on older projects. So they have not been accepting any new PlanCon projects for a number of years and will begin accepting them again on July 1st. So theoretically, as those old projects, the debt service gets paid off and it falls off the reimbursement schedule, there will be dollars available in that line item to reimburse for new projects. So the question that, the questions that we need to ask of PDE are, number one, if we apply for this on July 1, even if there is not enough money to get us reimbursed immediately, will we eventually get reimbursed? And number two, how, when do you anticipate reimbursement starting if it's not immediate? We are trying to schedule a conference call right now with PDE and our architects to go through that. Once we have that discussion, we'll be able to come back to you with more information and a recommendation on how to best time that project to maximize any state dollars that are available.
So where, a month ago, we were thinking that possibly would be bid and undertaken this, this construction season. It now looks like that will be next year.
It, we would, we cannot release bids if we're going on PlanCon dollars until after we apply and go through that process. So I would think the earliest that we would be opening bids would be in the fall, which would mean that the construction could start mid-year next week.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Plato, what about the raised money we're funding our ACP, that funding with the asbestos? That seems to be what the governor wants to do is, could we use any of that money? Is that available to us? Do we have asbestos?
Yes. We do not have enough information on that yet, but we will be evaluating that. Another item for discussion on here tonight is the Roosevelt demo, which contains a significant amount of asbestos, so that might be a project that we would pursue state dollars for.
Thank you.
Anything else on the academy project? Clerk of the Works, Mr. Rothman.
Yes. So we were in talks, we have been in talks with a gentleman who we think is going to be a very good candidate for the clerk of the works for this, the collegiate academy project. He, he's been in construction for 30-plus years, primarily in building schools. He was a partner in one of the bigger firms a little bit further south from us. He sold his partnership and has since been doing clerk of the works work with HHSDR for about the last three years. He just finished doing the same thing for Farrell School District. Farrell just went through an $11 million, so very similar to ours, renovation of their high school there. In talking with the business agent who was there, he actually could not say a bad thing about him, said that he saved the district at least twice what his fee was. So based on that, and I know I've spoken with him at least four or five times, met with him a number of times, he came up and met with Mr. Plato. He met with Mr. Zemcheck, the trade supervisor. We will strongly recommend that he be appointed as the clerk of the works.
Any questions, comments?
I do, Mr. President.
Mr. Sherman.
I went online to look up his company, and there are no reviews. Nothing.
Yeah, well, as in the Voitek Construction, isn't that? It's, it's within, again, three years of being in existence, and right now, I think it's actually just him and somebody who helps him with paperwork. But again, I really, he knows his stuff. He knows how to build schools, and I know that he's already helped us even before being appointed. We met with him in early January, and he had already started to have conversations with contractors about the upcoming collegiate project. He's met with the architects a number of times. Again, this is long before we even say yes to any of this, so he's, he's really kind of dove right in. I think that he'll be a good fit.
And, Mr. President. Also, if you look at his proposal, incorporated in that are a number of recommendations and references as well.
Okay.
So is this a resolution we'll see next week, too?
Mr. Sherman.
Mr. President, so will he be an employee of ours or subcontracted? I'd just like to make sure.
Subcontractor. Anything else on this? Okay, the Roosevelt demolition, yeah.
Okay, so if many of you remember, a former board member was very vocal on making sure that this building was demolished. So I'll at least go through some history just to kind of refresh everybody's memory. In June of '07 is when the building was closed. At that point, I know the school board and the superintendent were talking about tearing it down to the ground or renovating it. About a year later, and there's a very nice renovate or replace document that I found online that talked about the study that was done at the time, where they brought in three separate architects. And essentially, in 2008, they were stating that renovating Roosevelt would cost somewhere between 14 and 17 million dollars. So if we kind of push that forward with inflation to 2020 dollars, that goes to 18 million to 22 million dollars. Now, since 2008, there's no electricity to the building, there's no natural gas, there's no utilities. Last June, there was a fire in the gymnasium, and so I'm sure that any plans to renovating this building would grow probably beyond the 22 million dollars, if not close to 30. Randy spoke with our insurance agent today, and essentially, at this point, we've got liability insurance on it, we've got demolition insurance on it, but I believe the words that the insurance agent said, that it was the biggest risk that we have as a district. And it's getting to the point where there's a possibility that nobody would actually insure that building. So due to its disrepair, as far as the inside of the building, and the fact that it is littered at this point with asbestos, we think that at least kind of going down the path of tearing down the building and actually having the plot of land would probably be more valuable than the plot of land with the building on it. If you remember, in 2017, the board voted to subdivide the property. So Ainsworth Field and the tennis courts are on one plot, and then on the other side of that plot is just the building and that land. So I think that's about three and a half acres worth of land that's probably, again, more valuable for someone without the building than with the actual building on it.
The cost of demolition has kept us shy away from the past.
Correct.
It's changed.
So the cost of demolition is still, from the architect's facilities plan, is about $850,000. Now, if you recall, with last year's surplus, we wound up paying off that sale leaseback bonds, and on top of that, we had a little bit less than $4 million that we transferred into the capital funds. And so that was money that we had not really counted on as far as being part of the capital improvements funds. So we feel that there is the, now money set aside that we can pay for the demolition of the building.
And could you speak to the asbestos portion with being reversed by the state? Is that something that's an option? Is there a comment over that?
Right, that's something that the governor just proposed this week in his budget. Again, we don't have a lot of information on that, but if the board wants us to proceed to continue to investigate and move forward on this, that would be part of our analysis.
So the, there is a resolution on next week to permit AGX, which has been the company that we have worked with to get the kind of asbestos mapped out in all of our buildings. And so this, the agenda item for next week would be that first step towards mapping out, seeing how much asbestos is actually inside the building. So that way, they can make a guide for if and when the demolition occurs, they know exactly that they're abating it correctly. And that also will take us, that will take them some time, and so hopefully by then we'll get some more information on what the governor's proposing as far as subsidies for those kind of projects.
Mr. President, I have a few questions. What would our staffing be up there currently? Is there, do we have anybody on site, a janitor, maintenance?
There is nobody on site. There's one entry into the building at this point, because we pretty much locked down every single other door. A lot of the windows have been broken and they're covered up with wood boards. I will at least remind everybody that in 2015, we did have people go in and salvage anything that would have been historic. So there were very nice ceramic tiles that were throughout the building and were around the water fountains. Those have all been taken down, are actually in storage at the service center. And then any piece of artwork that was in that building that was architectural or anything that was worth saving, we brought those all back to the service center and we boxed them up.
There was a fire there a few years ago. There are no utilities, was that arson?
Most likely, yes.
Yes. And what would be the plan relative to Ainsworth Field? Would the district continue to own that, or?
So we currently do own that and take care of the entire thing. So yes, we would continue. That's why we subdivided it, so that if somebody did come in and was interested in purchasing the baseball field and renovating it and making it their own, they could. Or if somebody wants to purchase the other side, the other, the three and a half acres where the building sat, then we would, we would have the, the board would have the ability to say yes to that.
Does the school district utilize Ainsworth Field for baseball practice or games?
Yes, very much so.
Thank you.
There was an interesting citizen who addressed the board a year or two ago about the original plans going back to the 1920s for some kind of a community park there that never materialized. And she wants to come back, and I think the uncertainty of what we're, they just kept that on hold. So perhaps if the building was gone, her, Randy has talked with her, perhaps she can reemerge with some, a starting point for suggestions if we would choose to keep the property or would want to make a decision on what to do with that. But at this point, we're about to proceed as Mr. Walker has outlined.
Mr. President? I do know the neighbors there, and they are just dying for it to be removed because of property values and the eyesore. So that is their one thing they said to me when I was running, please get rid of Roosevelt. So it's a long time in coming.
We cut heat over the years, too, over historical, people who want to preserve the historical significance and integrity of it all, so that affected us years ago and made us hesitant.
Mr. President, if anybody is interested in doing that, we would be happy to donate the property.
I know, I'm not advocating, I'm just letting everyone know who might not have been aware.
And we have tried selling the building and the property, and again, we just take anything.
Okay. Pilot review, Mr. Walker?
I'm going to yield the beginning of the presentation to Mr. Pruschniky.
I think it was in the last month or so, there were some questions about pilots and how the school district operates with pilots, and the board asking for a little bit more information about that. So Attorney Walker and I wanted to present some information right now regarding that subject. We're not asking you to vote on anything right now, but this will be coming up over the next couple of months, so we wanted everybody to be on the same page. The district got involved in starting pilots or signing pilots with different organizations back in 1996, in conjunction with the city and also the county. The majority of pilots that we have, they're for two different reasons. Either the organization feels like it's, they're tax exempt and they feel like it's the right thing to do, they want to give something back to the, to the school district and the city and the county, or both parties feel the opposite. So the organization feels that they're tax exempt, the school district or the city feels that they should be taxed. But neither party wants to spend the money and the time and the effort to fight it out in court. So they come to some sort of resolution. The majority of our pilots in Erie were at 50% of taxes. If you look at some other municipalities such as Pittsburgh, I've been told they're somewhere around 25 to 35% of the real estate taxes that they're collecting. We put together two different spreadsheets for you to review. And the first one, you'll see it as Tim's passing them around, the first sheet is our convertible pilots, what we call our convertible pilots. And the HANDS organization was very instrumental in developing those with us over the last couple of years. Basically, what we discovered is that, based on the use of their properties, it was determined that they could actually be reimbursed by the federal government for their taxes. These properties were all tax exempt in the past. We understood and working with that organization that they had needed time to apply, apply for their certifications to get this reimbursement, we wanted to work with them. So these are what we call our convertible pilots. As you can see from that first sheet, the top grouping, those expire June 30th of 2021. After that point, they go 100% fully taxable. The second half of that report, those are, those expire this June. So those will go right back on the tax roll beginning this July. The second page are more traditional pilots, and it's two pages, I apologize if I went just front and back there. A number of these, you'll see a number of these pilots actually expire this April. So what we're going to be doing is reaching out to these organizations, Alcanon Club, Sarah Reid Retirement, Sisters of St. Joseph, which is the St. Mary's Home, St. John's Evangelical Church, Villa Maria. We're going to be reaching out to those organizations to just confirm ownership of those properties and to also confirm the services that they're currently offering. And then we'll have to make a determination if we should continue a pilot agreement with those, if they should go, or maybe they should go 100% fully taxable in the future. So that's something we'll be bringing to the board probably in March or April. Does anybody have any questions, or Tim, did I miss anything?
If I can add a couple of things. So we're using the acronym PILOT, it's Payment in Lue of Taxes, in case you're wondering what that stood for. The, when we first started this exercise in reviewing our pilots, we did do a comprehensive county, or citywide review. We took a listing of all properties from the County Assessment Office, broke them out appropriately, and we believe we've captured just about everything that needs to be captured in the city of Erie. And it was during that process that we determined that the federally subsidized properties were able to be taxed, and the federal government would reimburse those tax dollars. And so as Randy said, we appreciate HANDS working with us as they manage the majority of those properties. Also during the process of that, we identified other properties that are currently managed by HANDS that have pilots. So that would be Villa Maria Housing Partnership Limited Partnership and Villa Maria, Maria Housing Partnership 2, this is the old mother house at Athan Liberty. They realized, and we told them, that we will be canceling, or recommending that this board cancel those pilots at the end of this tax year, which means we'd have to take action by April 30th of 2020. And they're preparing those properties to be put onto the federal rolls as well and have those taxes paid through the federal government reimbursement. The reason we didn't put them on a convertible pilot was because they already had a pilot that was expiring at the right period of time, so we just let that play. The other property that's managed that is in that particular situation is the St. Joseph's Apartments on Sixth Street at Sixth and Maryland. That pilot does not expire until the end of the 2021 year, and we'd have to give notice in April 30, by April 30th of 2021. That's another property they're aware that, and they're making their appropriate arrangements to have that put on the federal rolls as well. We did, as part of this, identify, Mr. Plato, a, we found a report from the Urban Land Institute, which had declared that Erie has the sixth largest amount of pilots, I believe it was, in terms of value in the entire country, for every metropolitan area in the entire country, and we were lauded for how we'd used that. Our amount had gone up exponentially since then because of the convertible pilots, but it's something that we take very seriously in making sure that these properties are, property owners are paying the proper amounts.
The amount that we're getting back in pilot revenue for this full year will be just over 1.3 million. The one property that we left off the list, that is not on your list, and it's, I don't know if we want to consider it a pilot or a educational grant, it's kind of its own category, is the agreement that we have with LECOM, where they basically provide, it's more of an educational grant to the district based on the amount of taxes that they currently pay on their properties. They've set aside a certain amount for the district, and what they'll do is they'll deduct any property taxes off of that grant and then give the remaining portion to the district. That is off your list because it's not a traditional pilot.
We actually make more in tax dollars off of that than we would otherwise. So it is a very good deal for the rest of us.
Any questions? Mr. President?
Mr. Nichols? At our meeting last month, we had the Sunrise Assisted Living Owner or Tenant present. He was concerned about his tax assessment, which I think was 14 million?
That's correct, I believe so, yes.
He's paying 250,000 a year in taxes, much more than the other facilities. I look here at St. Mary's Home, the value you have is 9.8 million. It's five times bigger than Sunrise. I think that needs to be looked at.
Mr. President? I just want to remind the board that the Bickford property is currently in litigation, and we will be discussing that under executive later this evening.
And if I may add one more thing to that as well, those values, we don't place those values. Those are, those values are, they come out directly out of the County Assessment Office. I'm sure that'll be addressed at such point that there's a countywide assessment. In the pilot agreements that we have, what we do is we essentially agree that whatever the tax, whatever the taxable value of the land and property is as set by the County Assessment Office, we agree to accept 50% of the taxes that we would have otherwise have received. And both parties are permitted, at any point that the pilot may be in existence, to appeal the value of that through the regular assessment appeal process. So we don't get involved in setting that value. That's the County Assessment Office.
Well, it seems to me that when we have an asset of that value that under assessed, that we should be doing something about it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the pilot review? Okay, the review of the draft agenda for next Wednesday, regular for Erie Board meeting. Let's talk, let's question and discuss if there's anything that you are aware of on the agenda you want to question or concern about or are interested in. And before we're finished, Darlene has something she wants to add, too. So first, let's just take a quick look at the agenda, the asked agenda, and is there any questions or concerns by the board members? You done?
Yeah, I can't find it though. There was a travel to a Great, oh, there it is. Travel to the Great Lakes K-12 Maritime Educators Meeting, and I don't have my notes in front of me, but I thought that we were paying for travel and for salary. And the cost for the travel, I thought, was really high. It's like $130? Was that just for gas, or can someone, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, I can pull it up, but it was just really high, I thought. And maybe I misread it, but.
Don't they have to, Mr. President?
Mrs. Sheridan?
Don't they have to pay for it out of their own pocket and give us back the receipts?
If it goes in front of the board prior to, then they still have to get, we have to get the receipts. So they have to justify that for any of the, you know, amount of money they may have for lunch, there's a specific amount that... There's a specific amount that they are permitted, as well as for the travel and the mileage, if they're using their own car.
So maybe something's just not in here, because what I see is $16 for mileage and then $15 for lunch, but then the total estimated expense was 131, so it didn't add up, and that's why I'm not high.
We can take a look at that.
Okay. I didn't know if, maybe it was for the conference itself?
It's just one.
Oh, just one person?
Mr. President?
So it wasn't the gas, it was just the total that I was looking at.
Day one would be 15, there's lunch.
Mr. Brockman?
200.
There's, if you look at the bottom where it says the total of 131 dollars.
Is that 116?
The issue is that the mileage is incorrect, as in the total. It says 16, but it should read 116. And then when you add the $15 for the lunch, it's 131.
Okay. So $116 for mileage?
It's 200 miles round trip and then the federal reimbursement of 25.
All right. I apologize, I guess I thought.
Don't apologize. Do you need more? Do you want to look into it more, or is that enough?
No, that's good. No, that's good.
And Mr. President, just to clarify with the board that we have a policy in place right now where we do reimburse our employees the IRS mileage rate. And a few years ago, we did institute the IRS per diem rate to cap the amount of meal reimbursements and hotel reimbursements that our employees receive if they travel out of town.
Anything on the rest of the draft and the new business for next week? Okay, Darlene had made me aware that she had an item that she wishes to add to the agenda, and she can do that before Friday, correct, Angela?
Yes.
So again, the governor and his budget proposal is talking about charter school reform. And so PSBA has asked all members to, board members throughout the Commonwealth to consider passing a resolution calling for charter school funding reform. And that's, so that is what I want to present to the board next week. It's similar to those of us who have been on the board before to that resolution we passed against Senate Bill Two, back when they wanted to provide vouchers to students to go to private schools and charter schools. There's been two major articles, both in the Post Gazette and in the Philadelphia Inquirer about the governor's proposal. They're saying that this proposal and the budget would make up for another 280 million available for school districts. So again, if we could get some serious reform to our charter school funding, it's, money is going to go back to our students.
Mr. Spiegel? If she's looking for like a co-sign or whatever it is, I totally, you know, go for that as well. Second letter or whatever the language is.
I'll send this to everyone so that you can see the resolution.
Make sure that it's submitted to Angela by Friday, so it can be officially on the agenda. I talked with Darlene a day or two ago about this, and I just use this as a teaching moment for the new board members. This is a good way, if you have an issue or a resolution you wish to bring to the board, bring it to us at this committee in the whole meeting. We can air it out and decide whether it's favorable, questionable, objectionable, needs to be tweaked. And in any case, there still are two days for such a resolution to be dropped, modified, and still submitted by this Friday's deadline. Then it goes out with the, as part of the agenda, and then we still discuss it then. But I mean, it's a good way to start a process of bringing it to the board's attention if you have a matter that you want the board to deal with. So that's what Darlene has done, and there will be on next week's agenda for us to consider and vote on. Is there any other matter that any board member wants to bring up? We are going to have to have an executive session after this, but at this point, is there anything else? Tom?
Mr. President, I brought it up at the last school meeting, but I think it's very interesting to see what our resources are for reaching all the special needs students, whether it's the blind, the deaf, the speech impaired, all of those. Because I don't know about that, and I've talked with other people, they don't know either. So I just feel like I need to know so I can tell people about this. I'm sure we have assets, I remember when I was on board, I can find if they had speech therapists working for them, and do we have any working for us now? I think that we do, I don't know. I suspect we're a big enough district where we have some of our own payroll. But how many do we have? How many do we need? Is this something that's working well for us? Presumably it is, because it's never brought up. Just because it's not brought up doesn't mean that it's something that, if it's a good thing that we're doing, so I'd like to, you know, push out the control.
Mr. President, I will tell you that my daughters both get speech and occupational therapy, and they're both getting services from Mercy Hers. Angie Kanaki is amazing as a parent, that I can tell you that those special needs services are very intact because I use them for my own children. So just from experience myself, I'm pretty sure they got a lot of stats on what they have, but I know from seeing them work with my own children, that we have them, that come out and do a lot of good work with our students. And they do an amazing job at getting the IEPs together, meeting with parents. I don't even know how they do all the stuff that they do. They do a lot, and they do a great job at making sure they follow up with every parent. I work with a lot of parents, well, not me, I don't work with them, but I get a lot of discussion from a lot of parents that have students with disabilities because they know that my daughters go to public schools and they have disabilities, so they know that I'm, have a connection with Nora and Angie. And they provide, they're on top of it, you know, with the testing. And Angie just called me about testing my other son, so it's just, I mean, they're on top of it, and they get right at every school, even on the high school level, I've talked to them, and even on all levels, middle and elementary schools. So I'm sure they can, I'm sure Mr. Palito can.
I'd be happy to talk to you anytime about the services that we provide within the district and also some of the services that we rely on to look under for. I know you said you had spoken to a gentleman who had a child that's a school for the deaf and could talk to you about that.
So could the superintendent make a report to us at some future point in the near future?
Absolutely.
Precisely about it? Thank you. Two things I wanted to mention. The superintendent was going to, is maybe still in the process of communicating with the EDDC. They requested a meeting, and I haven't had a chance to ask him if any progress has been made, but I know he was going to. So if he hasn't yet, he's working on that, they want to meet with us and work with us. Do you have anything yet, or do you have to get back to us?
I am going to have to get back to you. I have not had a chance to reach out.
I just, I didn't want us to not answer the letter, it was addressed to us. So no, not a problem, just keeping it alive. That policy review committee, we had a policy review committee in place for at least a year and a half, two years. I was the chairman, and it consisted of me and Mr. Spiegel and Mr. Titus eventually, after a change or two. This, it came up again for discussion, or in the discussion of that responsible contract issue. And I think our meeting here a month ago at this working session of the committee in the whole, I think Mr. Nichols and Mrs. Feeney expressed an interest to be on it, and so I'm going to restructure that committee, and it will now consist of Mr. Spiegel as chairman, I'm going to step out, Mr. Titus and Mr. Nichols and Mrs. Feeney. So they will continue that work. We met in the past probably three or four times over the period of a year and a half to consider in general different areas of policy. The solicitor, in advance of those meetings, reviews them and makes recommendations to that committee, and that committee recommends a follow-through to us to approve changes in the policy or discarding or modifications. Along with that, that vote we took at the regular meeting about the academy construction project, it was mentioned and pointed out that that was, the vote that we took that night was to cover just the specific project in question. And it was said that the review committee, yes, that the review committee would be taking a look at the policy in general. I think this specific policy is important enough, and I talked to the superintendent and the solicitor, and they seem to agree, that I therefore am going to pluck that policy out of the review committee, committee's work, and have a special meeting of the committee of the whole, somewhat like a public hearing, but a chance where the public will be notified in advance, all parties who want to express opinions on any side of it. A full airing of the question and a full discussion by the board on that specific policy so that we can hopefully modify, adjust, or change whatever we've learned needs to be. In having that discussion with the superintendent and Mr. Brockman and Mr. Walker, it seems like an ideal time to do it would be sometime between the two construction projects, where we've had enough experience with the academy bidding results that we can make an interpretation on what effect the suspension of that policy was last week, last month. And also in advance of the looming Erie High School project so that we'll be ready and not have to be dealing with this then. So somewhere in between the projects and March was thrown out as a potential time. So I just tell you that to keep it in mind. That policy review committee will continue to operate as I outlined it, I'll make sure Angela puts it in print for you. But at some time, maybe next month or beyond, the board will have a committee of the whole meeting, and we'll air out that whole policy, and the board can be prepared, be prepared between now and then to do any research and bring any questions and discussion at that If there's nothing else that any other director wants to bring up in here, we take a five or 10 minute break and assemble in the other room for an executive session.
Mr. President, I do want to raise, something for consideration of the board. Looking at our website, which is quite large, directors show up as nine smiling faces, and that's it. We're not figureheads. We're supposed to establish policy in this city, and for us to do that, we have to come to a consensus of the nine. I think that we should have a page or pages on the district website where we can put up our various ideas. We all have different strengths and weaknesses, and I think that we should have a bulletin board on the district website. I know several of the members are much more astute with social media than I am, and probably carry this on to some degree off the website, but I think this is something we should have on the website to show that, you know, we are citizens here, volunteers, we're attempting to do our best for the school district, we have different ideas, some will gather traction, some won't, but I think we should have an opportunity to post those on the website of the district.
Anyone else agree with that?
Mr. President, two things. First of all, I just noticed I don't have a mic, so that's kind of, is that my mic or what?
No, you can use it.
No, I need my own mic.
Well, you're going to have to borrow for now.
No, I'm not going to borrow nobody's mic, somebody's going to give me a mic, because I deserve to have a mic in front of me just like everybody else. And then second of all, I agree that, I feel like we should even have, I feel like when you do click on our page, it's just our picture, there's no description. I feel like on other boards that I sit on, they at least have a bio about their members, like a very short one, or like even a way that they can contact you directly and, because I don't feel like, they, I feel like people don't know how to get in touch with you off the website page. You know, at least have our email on there. I'm not saying that I'm on a full discussion page on there, because I, you know, I don't know, but I do feel like we should have, people need to, not, not for any type of promotion of ourselves, but just because some people are interested in who we are, what we do, what committees we serve on in the district, and, you know, things like that. You know, I just feel like, you know, on other boards that I'm on, they have all that, like they list all of that stuff, and they give you an email and phone number to contact that person at, instead of them having to call down there or look me up on the district. I could redirect people, I mean, look me up on social media, sorry. I could redirect people back to the website, like, hey, look, go to the district website, my information's on there, if you'd like to contact me. Maybe it might redirect some traffic out of other people's inboxes too, back to your actual email where they can, I don't know. Erica, do you have?
I'm certainly open to including some bio information or additional contact information if that's what the board agrees to do. Right now, under your photo on that page, your name is a hot link that provides your, that if you click on that, people can email you through that. So there is that information on there, I can also, but I'm open to changing that or adding additional features to however best served.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nichols?
It may help if I give an example here of what I particularly have in mind. I'm not looking for something where we have thumbs up or thumbs down or, you know, a list of responses. But for example, when I ran, I think all of us who had run, you somewhat run in a vacuum. You know, you have some ideas, you don't really know how they're being received, you're not sure if they're part of, why you were successful in your campaign or not. But for example, in my case, I favor electing school directors by district within the city. That's one. I also thought we should consider a academic middle school on the model of collegiate. Those are two possible policy developments, which I'd like to develop. I'd like to be able to post something about those and say, you have any interest in this? Email me or call me. And then if nobody responds, I've got my answer.
You won't be posted on my Facebook page for me?
How did you get responded?
I'm a primitive on social networking. I've never been on Facebook, for example. Thank you.
I don't want to say I disagree, but I take a different view. I think when a board member gets themselves elected, that means the community chose them to be here to exercise their judgment, to initiate things, to question and offer their opinions, but ultimately, we're part of a body that decides as a group, or one or one group of nine policymakers. And just to use an example, Darlene thought it was important that this board consider being known to be in support of charter school reform. So she brings it here tonight, we discuss it. I'm going to transfer that to you, Mr. Nichols, and say you could bring your desire to have a middle school along the lines that you said, bring it up here this way, at a meeting like this, and say to the superintendent, can you give us your thoughts on that now and down the road? Can you bring us a report on feasibility, the desirability, the practicality of it all? And then you could bring a resolution to the board to consider and discuss it and vote on. So that's my view of how it ought to be handled, but I don't want to condemn or criticize any suggestions that you make, and I just think there's a mechanism in place for us to do our work without, I just don't think it's a, I don't think we've been neglectful to not have dazzling bios on ourselves, or I wouldn't want us to be in competition with trying to out-administer each other, because we do have an administration that we charge with the responsibility to bring proposals to us and to work out proposals that a board majority would create. So there's just a few things to think about, I just want that to be mentioned.
And thanks for that. That does provide me some guidance.
I just didn't want you to think there's not another mechanism for you to advance anything that you believe in or want to see, want to understand whether it can be done, ought to be done, should be done, how it could be done. So there's a way to initiate it and then start a discussion process and then call upon the administration to weigh in, and at some point, it comes to focus as a policy or a business, whatever. It's not a one night thing. That's all. If there's nothing else to discuss in here, we'll take a pause and assemble in a few minutes and. and.